To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. A moment of silence, especially given this last week's events. Thank you very much. Maybe you've seen a good night or welcome to tonight's meeting. The first item on the agenda relates to citizen concerns. Are there concerns of citizens who would like to approach the board? Hearing none. We'll move to approval of the agenda dated July 12, 2016.
Move it.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed say no. And the motion is adopted five to zero. Just for the sake of the audience, Supervisor Ung is joining us from Supervisor Ung.
Kyrasal, Mr. Chairman.
Kyrasal, which is outside of the country. So, thank you for being here in spirit or by teleconferencing. Item number four is approval of the minutes of the July 5, 2016, meeting.
Move it.
I'll second. Is there discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed say no. And the motion carries five to zero. Item five is discussion on approval of the claims.
Move it.
Second.
A motion and a second. Is there discussion on the claims? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed say no. And the motion passes five to zero. Item number six, Conservation Director Rick Snyder. This is a good news report. Supervisor Monson and I were able to be there for the opening of the new cabins at Southwood Conservation. And I took the liberty, I don't know if I told you this, of taking a few photos and welcoming you here tonight and are very excited to have you tell us a little bit about these beautiful new additions to our conservation park.
Well, they opened for rent this Friday night and we're already rented for the weekend and had tons of calls yesterday and today both. So, finally getting the rest of the information on our website as well. So, people will be able to take a look at some of the pictures of them and things like that. Look at the calendar for available dates. They're one-bedroom cabins. I think they're eight hundred some square feet. So, they're quite roomy. They have a full bathroom in them. Not a tub, but a walk-in shower unit.
There's a picture of the shower, too.
Cool. And there it is, yeah. The furniture is what's quite unique about it. We're pretty proud of that. We worked with a local craftsman from Mapleton, Lust Hills Custom Woodworks, Jeff Shoup. And he is custom building all these pieces of furniture for us. The beds, you can see the bed in that back bedroom there on that same picture through that door, made out of local red cedar trees. So, fabulous-looking stuff. No two pieces are alike. We got the other queen-size bed in the other cabin today. It's a different style than that. And we're still waiting for the two sets of bunk beds coming in. So, hopefully we'll be ready to go by this weekend. They're full housekeeping cabins. People just need to bring their own food and bedding, towels, and they're ready to go.
Look great.
They're beautiful.
Questions? Discussion? And it was very nice to see you had Mark Peterson.
Yes.
Was there, as well as the secondary roads. Forrest was there. And to see the collaboration and cooperation. So, great job to you and your staff and look forward to staying there.
Great team of contractors put that together. And I gotta mention that we're, you know, a $75,000 grant from MURD made that possible up there. So, it's probably about $190,000 project total by the time we got, starting with the grading to being completely finished.
Great. If anyone knows anybody on MURD, make sure to share your thanks. Thank you very much and really appreciate it.
Appreciate the recognition.
All right. Take care. We are then to item number seven, Human Resources, Ed Gilliland. And item 7A is approval of the memorandum of personnel transaction.
Second.
Mr. Chairman, I did have a question.
Yes.
I was hoping someone from the Treasurer's Office might be able to elaborate on Mr. Clayton's draft letter that explains the option to not create a deputy position is now in doubt and will be too much of a hassle. I just wondered why specifically?
Yes. And for the sake of everyone, and I should have done this, there's a request to pull that particular item from the agenda. Is that correct?
We rescinded that request.
Okay. So, that request has been rescinded. And Supervisor Ung, can you restate your question?
I was just hoping that, Mr. Clayton, you could elaborate on, you said you initially wanted to eliminate the deputy position and replace it, but it appears to be in doubt and doing so would be too much of a hassle. I wondered what the hassle was.
Well, the hassle, Mike Clayton, Treasurer, the hassle being that a wage plan position, you have to jump through a ton of hoops to get to that place. I wasn't prepared to do that. Plus, it gives me more flexibility with the deputy's position.
And Matthew, along those lines, this is Ed Gilliland, HR Director. I believe that the wage differential, there is some, but it's not substantial. By doing it this way, does give Mike's office a little more control of the position. And this is a unique position, given the duties that are to be performed. So, it seems to, it seems to fit well to make it a percentage dip.
So, Mike, are you saying you're rescinding the request that it be?
Taken off, right. Let's leave it on. Let's go ahead and proceed with it. You know, I was gonna pull it off is because we've had back-and-forth discussion about the pay not being adequate. And I've thought about it overnight and I think the pay is adequate. So, I want to go ahead and proceed with 55 percent deputy.
And is there other discussion or questions as related to that particular item? Supervisor Ung, was that adequate as far as what you've been answered?
Well, I know that the Treasurer is comfortable with it, but it seems like the hassle has been replaced with hoops. And I'm just not sure what the hoops or hassle is.
Perhaps Ed can explain that better to you because he explained it to me what would be involved with trying to do wage plan as opposed to a deputy. So...
And if I, if you wouldn't mind, I'll go ahead and elaborate on that a little bit. Please don't allow me to bore you too much. And what, Matthew, essentially what would happen is to make this part of the ASME union, we would have to create a higher-level position than the Clerk III, which is currently the highest level. There would, you know, that would involve letters of agreement, memorands of understanding of different things and could create issues in other departments. If we were to make this wage plan, we would have to get permission from the union and get their buy-in to make it a wage plan position where it had, where the person occupying this position previously had been part of ASME. So, we felt the best way to give control to the elected official and to make it clean and simple was to use the position as an appointed deputy.
Okay. That's exactly what I was looking for. Thank you.
Thank you.
And has there been discussion then with this particular employee as far as the salary level? I'm sorry to get you on. Okay.
And it's still not suitable, but it's, you know, any of what it is. So...
Okay. So, that's the, basically what's, what's being offered, so to speak, from the Treasurer's Office. Okay. All right. Any further discussion on any item along those lines?
Not with this position. And we just wanted to, I guess we do have one with one of the next pieces.
Okay. But not on the memorandum of personal?
This would be, is this one? Yes. This one would be, you received this as far as the, in your materials, as far as the two, two part-time positions to one full-time position. I wondered if anyone had any questions at all about that.
Other questions or discussion? And are you referring to juvenile detention?
Yes, yes.
That's the next item.
Well, that's the next item.
So, we'll talk about that if there are questions on the table.
Yes, yes, I'm sorry.
Any other, other discussion here? Hearing none. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
We are on item 7B, authorize the chairman signing authorization. Questions or discussion on this item? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Those opposed say no. And the motion carries five to zero. Item 7C is the request to be authorized positions. Is there discussion here?
Move it.
The motion?
Second.
And the second is their discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. And the motion carries five to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ed. Item eight, Gary Brown, Emergency Services. This is 2017 Lucas Assist Device for Cardiac Arrest Program.
Good afternoon, Gary Brown, Woodbury County Emergency Services. We're actually asking the board for two separate motions. One is to approval, to apply for the Lucas Device Grant. And the second is to authorize or to approve Don Zanley as the authorized official and Jean Justin as the fiscal officer for this grant. It's how we've been doing the EMS grants all along. So, the Lucas Device, we just put two of them in service yesterday with our department. They were purchased with county funds. They're automatic CPR device. We put it on the patient. We lower the device to the chest. And it actually does compressions for us, much more efficiently than humans can do it, especially in long-distance transfers. Some of our patients were doing CPR for well over an hour on. These will allow that device to do the CPR, freeing up a set of hands in the back of the ambulance. We're scheduled to get six of these devices through this grant for a value of, through the grant, they're about $70,000 for the six of them. But the research on them is incredible. Cities have been using them for a while and are now taking patients direct to the cath lab while the device is doing CPR because the patients are starting to move and regain consciousness while in cardiac arrest. So, they're very efficient at doing CPR. We have a meeting with the Woodbury County EMS Association tomorrow night. We called a special meeting to determine where we're going to place those. That's what we have the association for, is to look at things like this and make the decision as to which squads are going to receive those devices. So...
Move on A.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Is there discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. And the motion carries five to zero. Item eight B is approval to document Don Zanley as the authorized official and Jean Justin as fiscal officer.
Second.
Motion and a second. Is there discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Those opposed say no. And the motion carries...
Yes. And also, just for the board's information, we did put the two new Life Pac-15 Defibrillators in service yesterday. We have our new paramedic working with us now. And he's covering calls already. It's going extremely well. We were authorized by the state to go back up to the paramedic level yesterday. And we're, we're working him hard. He's taken a lot of calls already. So, with the new Life Pac-15s, we're able to cardiovert. We're able to pace the patient. There's a lot more that we're able to do with this device. And it will go all the way down to infants, which is what our old defibrillators wouldn't do, children or infants. So, we've got one device now that'll cover the spectrum. And we'll also be, we are also transmitting to the emergency room the patient's cardiac rhythm from the device. It actually has a built-in modem through the cellular network. It's uploaded to the cloud and downloaded right to the hospital. We're also able to send that direct to the cardiologists while they're driving to the hospital or while they're preparing so they can make it, determine the course of care for the patient. So, the board, if anyone wants to see a demonstration of some of the equipment, be more than happy to bring it into a meeting.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Item number nine, Rural Economic Development, David Glazer. And item nine is approval of a contract for comprehensive planning services with Simmering Quarry.
Good evening. Thank you. David Glazer, Rural Economic Development Director. Just following up with a proposed contract agreement with Simmering Quarry. County Attorney's Office has reviewed the proposed contract and is in favor of approving it.
All right. Wholeheartedly. Move on A.
Is there discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Didn't have a second.
I will second it.
I'll second.
Supervisor Ung, second.
Now you got two of them.
I'm trying to do two things at once.
So, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no.
No.
And the motion carries four to one. Item 9B is approval of financial support to Moville, Salix, and Sergeant Bluff for planning and design-related services.
This item is a follow-up now that we have an approved contract and budget for the 11 cities participating in the comprehensive planning project. A previous recommendation to the Board of Supervisors was to provide the cities of Moville, Salix, and Sergeant Bluff with a like-dollar amount that the other 11 cities are benefiting from. And with the motion that Supervisor Ung made two weeks ago, it was to provide $10,230 for planning and design-related services, including costs for construction of projects previously identified in existing city plans.
Move it.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no.
No.
And the motion carries four to one. Item 9C is IEDA Regional Marketing Group Grant. David?
This is a grant that the Rural Economic Development Department in Woodbury County have participated in the last couple of years. It's a regional marketing initiative for the counties of Woodbury, Plymouth, and Minota. All the economic developers work together in that three-county region to identify ways to support entrepreneurship, small business development, and market our three-county region. It does provide the ability for the Iowa Economic Development Authority to recognize our three-county region as a regional partnership and would then allow us to receive, what is the word I'm thinking for? Receive leads, receive leads as they get them and share them with various regions throughout the state. And basically, it's a, it's a dollar match program where we put in, last time we put in a total of $7,850 was the local match of all the different economic development entities. And then we were awarded $15,700, giving us total budget of, what is it, $23,000 something. We've received more interest for other organizations to support this. And so, we are actually proposing to increase the amount of the local match to give us a bigger marketing budget for the three-county region. So, I am requesting to receive approval to spend $2,000 out of my department's budget, which is funded out of local option sales tax, to be a part of this initiative.
Move it.
There's a motion and a second. Is there discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed say no. And the motion carries five to zero. Thank you very much.
And while I'm up here, I would just tell Supervisor Ung, thank you for the shout-out in his recent article in one of the rural papers for our comprehensive planning project. Nice press.
Thank you.
Item 10, Secondary Roads. Ben Kuzler. Item A is to consider an award of quotations for two retrievers for road grading work. This is an action item. And welcome.
Pass that authorization sheet. We'll get her done yet.
I think you sent some backgrounds, some pictures. That'll give us a retriever each district. And basically, they've been working real well at re-crowning the road, bringing in some lost material and adding some clay to our gravel, which helps binds it together.
Is there discussion on this item? So, you are looking for a motion to purchase two disc retrievers from Lycox Enterprises for $33,350.
It's a priority item. They have a patent on it. They're the only company that make this item. That's why we only have one quote.
I will make that motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed say no. And the motion carries five to zero. Item 10B is to consider an award of quotations for two pickup trucks.
And after consideration, looking at the vehicles, some of the vehicles did not have the trim of the fog lights, which were required from the Jensen bid. So, Kneffler was the company Mark would like to go with. They're about $500 and some dollars, a little bit higher, but with the extra options, it would even probably be more than that if he wanted another bid.
Okay.
So, which Jensen bid?
Kneffler.
I'm sorry, Kneffler.
So, you need a motion to purchase two Chevrolet 2500 HD pickups from Kneffler Chevrolet?
Move it. Second.
Motion and a second. Is there discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. And the motion carries five to zero. Item 10C is consideration of a permit for a tile line crossing in the county right-of-way.
And our code does require the county to allow that crossing if it's a natural flow of water and also pay for the cost if they are within reason. And Mark reviewed the quote and decided that that was an acceptable quote for doing the work.
Move it.
We have a motion and a second to approve the tile line crossing permit for Don Albers for installation of a tile line on Liston Boulevard. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed say no. And the motion carries five to zero. Thank you very much.
I want a pre-copies we have signed on this.
Okay.
I was just gonna add just a little bit. Interested to know what's going on with our department right now. We're actually, are paving down at Port Neal. Yay. It's been kind of a struggle with that work. They're using a machine called a stringless paver. And that, and that paving operation saves us literally thousands of dollars in work on the grades, putting in stakes every 25 foot. This will be the first project in Woodbury County with either the Iowa DOT or Woodbury County to do a stringless paving project. So, we're taking pretty good tabs on it, taking some pictures and video, and hope to present that maybe at an engineers' conference to show how that's done. And if any of you are interested in a tour, give us a call. We'll meet you down there and take you in and show you what's going on with it. It's pretty neat.
Very good. Cool.
Stringless. Basically, they don't use a wire to run the paving machine on. It's done with a total station that are set with controls, the GPS.
Pretty soon, it'll all be GPS.
Well, even some of the bridge decks, this company, Goberson Smith, is also doing bridge decks without strings. And that's, it's the future. And it's a, it's a little scary standing back and watching them go. And it's concrete's a pretty unforgiving. You make a mistake and there's not too much you can do but grind off a little bit. Very exciting.
Very good. Thank you very much, Ben. We'll now recess the Board of Supervisors meeting and convene the Upper Wolf Creek Drainage District Trustees Meeting. And item 11 is to consider acceptance of petition from Upper Wolf Creek Drainage District landowners.
Move to accept. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there discussion on this item?
Okay. The process is... Oh, boy.
Would you please approach the podium, state your name, and address for the record?
You can submit them here before they're actually required to file with the auditors.
Well, we have a copy of the file.
The original?
I'm talking about copies of the original. That's what I'm talking about. I didn't, I dumbed out and I didn't give you a signature. Last meeting I was at, above one man, Nick Coloff, and we've got some other ones that were sent in since then to fulfill the amount of land needed to participate, to vote for new trustees. We've got all but eighty acres.
Okay. So, the process, we take the petition tonight, and then the county engineer reviews it?
Yeah. We have to go through and, and basically check that we have, I believe it's 50% of the landowners are owning 70% of the land.
Joshua, could you go ahead and explain?
Well, it depends on what the goal of the petition is. There's two separate petitions that, or two different options under the code. One option is a petition to have an election for trustees that would be members of the drainage district. And basically, when that occurs, then those, once those trustees are elected, they would replace the Board of Supervisors in controlling and running the drainage district.
Well, I was, I was told that in order to terminate the water district, means we petitioned that you guys get off, we have to elect trustees in order to terminate.
Well, there's, there's another petition that would be a request to the, to this board, to the Board of Supervisors, to dissolve the drainage district. There's criteria under the code that the board would have to look at as to whether it's appropriate to terminate the drainage district or not. It's not, it doesn't happen automatically when their signature's presented. Basically, the signatures allow the board to set a hearing to determine whether it should happen or not. But...
I thought we just did that.
Well, and, and so that's why we're trying to figure out exactly what you're asking for. Because this board could entertain the petition to dissolve. But again, it's not necessarily, it's not guaranteed that the board would dissolve it because they have to look at the statutory criteria. And the statute contemplates that the petition that's submitted would be more than just a list of signatures, but it would also be a list of the reasons why the drainage district is no longer required, you know, kind of showing, showing the evidence why it's, it's no longer needed.
And this petition, particular petition, is just to transfer the management from this board to a new board. That's what this petition is for.
Well, and what's your, what's your ultimate goal?
Dissolve.
Is it to dissolve or replace the trustees?
Well, we're, the way I was talked, told, under, I don't know what statute it is, if you guys, what you already did was relinquish the duties, of my understanding, just medical, then we would have to elect trustees out of these signatures by vote and have three people elected to watch the election. And then these trustees could dissolve.
Right. But they would still have the same statutory duty as far as the analysis as to whether the drainage district can be dissolved is still according to that statute. They'd be bound by the statute, just like this board is bound.
Which is what?
Basically, it's a showing that the, the factors that were in existence at the beginning when the drainage district was created are no longer present, that they're, basically that there's no longer need for the drainage district to, to continue to exist.
I thought that was our right as landowners.
You have, you have the right to request that. And then the hearing's set. And then you can present the reasons why. But it's ultimately up to the trustees, whether that's the Board of Supervisors or it's members of the district sitting as trustees, to determine whether it should be dissolved. Because I think the statute wants to, requires that the trustees look at the long-term effect of what dissolving the district would do as far as management of the flood control and, in the, in the land area.
Well, in the immediate area, there have been tariffs added since 1915. There's water control on, on the side of the creeks with 638s. It's totally different, was in 1950.
But Joshua, that's not, that's what this meeting's for today. Our, this meeting is for to accept the petition into a record and canvass it.
We need to be clear on which one they're asking for, though.
According to the petition, it is direct transfer of the management of the drainage district to a board of trustees.
Well...
That's gonna, that all drainage district expenses are paid directly by the district landowners. There are drainage taxes. So...
And, and looking at the face of the petition, I believe it says something about immediately removing the Board of Supervisors and replacing them with members, which isn't the statutory process. I mean, you have to call an election and... I mean, you have to call an election, and there's going to be a cost associated with sending out the notices and doing the election, and then, and that's...
They will have to acquire an attorney to do all that.
Right, and it's going to be charged back to the members of the Drainage District.
That's right.
So if the ultimate goal is dissolution, and you don't have to have the election to do the dissolution, I'm just, I want to make sure that you know what you're asking for, and that we do what makes the most sense.
Well, we ask for the supervisors to relinquish their powers because of these. And I thought we just did that.
We've got to do a motion here, and let me try it out.
We have a motion and a second.
What is it?
Consider acceptance of the petition, and in that motion, then, that means we are giving up our control of that Drainage District. That's not statutorily possible, though.
No. I think the motion is to accept the petition from the Upper Wolf Creek Drainage District landowners, and the county engineer review the petition to assure that the undersigned means required state code thresholds for further action.
But if they're requesting an election, the petition should be submitted to the county auditor.
Right.
And then, once the county auditor receives them, at the next board meeting, he reports that to the board, and then the board is supposed to set the date for the election.
Which would be, the least amount would be 40 days, right?
Not sooner than 40 days, I believe.
So then, we don't, at this point, it would not make statutory sense for us to move to receive a petition when that petition's supposed to go to the auditor, and that's supposed to come back before this board at the next meeting. Is that correct?
Right.
Well, the other problem is, the request is for immediate removal. I think that's what's causing...
And that's what I'm saying. What they, what, just looking at the face of the petition, what they're asking for is not something that's statutorily possible, because you can't have the immediate removal. You got to, this board will continue to sit as the trustees until the election occurs, and once the trustees have been formally elected, then those trustees, they have to comply with all the statutory requirements as far as the hearings and sending out the notices and that sort of thing, and then they can go on, and if they want to dissolve or whatever they want to do, they can do that, but they have to be formally elected and put in place.
I think we're going to get where you want to go, but as government goes, it's going to take a little movement.
Well, I think I get it, my packet, it was statutory support or something like that they had to file.
You're going to file that with the auditor's office. It's got to, the petition's got to be properly worded, and to accept that, it doesn't do what they want it to do, right, Joshua?
Well, ideally, it would be worded better than it is, because it doesn't specifically request an election, and what it's asking for isn't statutorily possible. Who was it that came up with the wording on the petition?
We have an attorney.
Sir, if you could approach, appreciate it very much, just for the sake of the...
Who was the first to?
Sir, would you state your name? Sir?
State your name, please.
Well, you wanted to. You did already.
Can you restate your name, please?
Oh.
Thank you.
Rick Benson.
Thank you. Do you get that, Brett? Okay, thank you. Now, sir, would you?
Nick Koloff, I'm climbing hill, and we had an attorney draw up that petition to dissolve the Upper Wolf Creek...
No, not dissolve.
Well, no, not to remove the Board of Supervisors as trustees. Because that was established like in 1915 or something, and it's, it's, there's about X amount of acres that were getting taxed for all the water that comes down from hundreds of acres, just us in this Upper Wolf Creek District. That originated years and years ago when they straightened that creek. They had a, they had the Board of Supervisors, and there's some of the farmers there that was flooding their ground, so they straightened that Upper Wolf Creek out, and that's where that all involves from, and there's, that Wolf Creek goes above old Highway 20 up there and drains from the west and the east and the north. And we're getting sacked down there for all of that cost that we did incur, and so, you know, to us, that's not, I mean, when that water gets to us, you know, the creek's full.
And I understand your reasoning and rationale, I just, the original question asked was who helped to draft or draw up the language. Is it the opinion of our Assistant County Attorney and Auditor that that needs to be redone so we can give these gentlemen a way forward, or is that acceptable to the auditor's office as it's currently petitioned?
Because I'm going to do as I always do and seek the advice of my attorney.
Well, I mean, I hesitate to, the language could be better, but I hesitate to say that we wouldn't accept it, because then you'd basically have to go back and get everybody's signature again. And I, and I think that's part of the reason why we've asked...
That's a lot of time, a lot of hours.
Part of the reason why we asked you guys to come tonight, so that we could be clear on exactly what it is that you're asking for. But as long as we know that you're asking for an election, and everyone that signed this knows that what they were signing was a request for an election, then I think we could accept this and go ahead and...
You know, we're in a different world in this discussion. It's attorneys' discussion. Do you want to talk to this guy and maybe their attorney?
Well, I mean, what I'm hearing, and I think both of you are saying, is the election is what you're asking for, and that's set out in 468, 501, and 502.
Right.
And that directs that you submit the signatures or the petition to the auditor.
No.
So I think the step tonight is for you to give the signatures you have to the auditor, and then next, Mr. Gill is the auditor.
Right.
And then next week, the board would, the auditor would report to the board as to whether the, it has the required number of signatures, and if it does, then the hearing would be set, or a date would be set for the election. But like...
Joshua, can you change the petition now that it's been signed?
No.
Well, it has the last sentence, the request is for immediate removal. If that cannot be done, then how can you accept the petition?
Is it because their intent is being stated and clear, and we understand whether they're ultimately going, or?
I mean, it's not ideal. The wording's not ideal. I think that we can look at the petition as a whole, and we can interpret it in a manner that's...
As long as we get to an election...
The closest to the statute. And really, we only need 50% of the landowners to request the election, and they're still...
We have...
You know, they still have to vote in the election and all that sort of thing.
Here's what I'm going to do, is based on that advice from the attorney, is I'm going to accept it when you file it with us, but what's going to happen is that you're doing so at your peril, because it doesn't say anything about an election here, and what could occur is some landowner who doesn't want it to happen could raise an objection to that petition.
And do we have any indication, or?
But everybody's signed it.
Well, that's, and if everybody understands that what you're calling for is an election...
Pat, do you have an estimate as far as how much the election might cost? I mean, I know it's not through your office, but...
Probably all it would be maybe a couple hundred bucks in printing costs or something like that.
But would they have to get an attorney as far as drawing up the notices and that sort of thing for the hearing dates?
Yeah.
I think I would.
We have, we have an attorney. He can't be here, he's at a town meeting tonight, but we'll be represented.
I mean, that's the other cost that's involved.
Right, so just whatever costs there are, I mean, they're going to be charged against the district, and they'll be assessed on the next statement, so my concern is that if some of these people that signed it, and then when they get their bill for whatever their portion of the election costs are, say, hey, we didn't agree to this, you know, they need to know that it's coming, but...
Well...
Well, that's, I don't think there's going to be a problem with that, because they've already been notified that there will be possibly attorney fees, so, and there wasn't any objections to that, so I don't think there's going to be a problem with that, so we can get this thing taken care of.
So it sounds like we all have our next steps going forward, and you know what to do with the auditor's office, and then we'll anticipate this coming back before our board again.
So you file the original with the auditor's office.
The original?
Yes.
So we really can't vote on this?
Correct.
But you already did.
No, we didn't. We made a motion and a second, and it'll just die on its own for right now, and we'll bring it back.
Should we withdraw it or table it?
I'm just going to put in the minutes that you discussed the petition process.
Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate your patience as we work through this.
Okay.
All right.
There's Ben.
We will, yes, Ben.
Can I just make a comment, then? Do I talk to Joshua or Pat about the agenda item for next week and the wording of that agenda item? This is going to be due tomorrow morning.
Start with Pat, because if Pat doesn't know, he'll contact Joshua.
Do I need to give you guys any comments?
No, Pat.
Do you have, do you have the original?
Yes, I've got some of the originals. I don't have the ones that were sent to the attorney. I've got copies, but I don't have the original.
We've got all but about four signatures, and they might be in the attorney's office by now, but I didn't check, but we have over...
How soon does this have to happen for you folks?
Well, we're just, we're starting going, you know, just as, I know it's going to take a little time, but we just want to get it done and get it, because it's been...
Why don't, when you get it all together, why don't you bring it into the auditor's office, and they'll accept it at that point, put it in there, and so it won't be next week, but it'll...
Okay.
Thank you all. Appreciate it.
But we only need 50%.
That's what Joshua said.
Well, we've got that right here.
All right.
All right, very good. We'll now adjourn the Upper Wolf Creek Drainage District Trustees' meeting and continue the Board of Supervisors meeting where the chairmen report. First items, Board Office and Boardroom Modernization and Updating. Thank you to WCICC, Kenny Schmidt, John Malloy for their updating. You can see the permanently affixed speakers and improved audio, and we're looking at the potential of live streaming, which is something that we could potentially give our constituents the ability to see and hear our business as it happens. So this is something that had been looked at previously, but we're looking at it within the realm of what can potentially be done since technology's been progressing without much of a prohibitive extra cost, so obviously, if we get to that analysis and cost, we'll bring it back, but it seems like it's something that's very doable, so that would be good.
Very good.
Item number two, Western Iowa Tech Resolution and Event. We'll consider a resolution that I reviewed and which we recognize their outstanding contribution over the last 50 years. If you save the date of August 19th, we're being invited as a board with other elected officials for a celebration, plan to make a few remarks, and have a good opportunity to be there as a full board. Speaking of future dates, I wanted to see August 1st, excuse me, Smithland has requested if we have an open date to be able to come out to their location, and wanted to see if that was prohibitive for anyone.
I can't, Jackie and I can't.
Jackie and you cannot?
No.
Okay. I will work to, go back to the drawing board on that. Number three, honoring resolutions. If you have anyone who's demonstrated outstanding community involvement, let me know. Just a reminder, I have a person in the Red Cross who does some great work, and if you have someone else in mind, just let me know. And then finally, push notifications and calendars. One of the measures that Karen and mainly Karen's been working on is having notifications that go to each of us so that we have reminders on our phones and email, and so if that's something that you're not getting...
We just had a brain drain. August 1st is good.
We didn't have it.
We don't have them.
Only one.
Okay. So August 1st out at Smithland does seem like a, what a time to go. So with the calendars, you should be getting meeting invite notices to your email based on the meetings that were assigned to as liaisons, and if it's a meeting that's an outside organization, that should be coming from them, so I just wanted to let you know if you have something that is being set up that hopefully will help all of us juggle the many committees. Any questions on any of those items? We're to item 13, reports on committee meetings.
We had a Grow SULAN Task Force meeting. CF has put in 17.4 million man-hours since they started the project. They still have about 5,000 workers out there. They are 93% plus in completion. They lost 12 days because of weather conditions in June, which hurt quite a bit. There is a stack out there that's 300 feet high, and there will be a burn-off flare that's another 200 feet high. They're going to get publicity out on that so people don't think the world is on fire. HEP is making good progress on their $130 million project. It's pretty much all enclosed. They're moving right along. Things are looking very good, so. And Mid-American is making a potash pit, and that's well underway. They're moving an awful lot of dirt to do that. It's a two-year project. Highway 20 Association met last Friday, and everybody's very happy. The district engineer did not have to take any hard questions.
Very good.
That's it.
Other committee reports. At SULAN District Health, give an update on their TB report and learn some of the protocol for quarantine and isolation, and working with the county attorney's office if that so became necessary, and they offer a least restrictive option, which they did recently for a homeless individual, in which they provided food and shelter through a, actually a motel that was accessible from the parking lot, and worked with cautionary restrictions in order to be able to mitigate further spread and prevention of disease. So I thought that was fascinating, and then got a tour from Kevin Greem. The facility looks wonderful, and really felt that there was a good spirit from those in the WIC department who, or division, who called themselves Women in Construction, and showed a picture of their window and had a photo of it, and so there will be a ribbon cutting coming sometime soon, which you've heard about, and good service access delivery and this new kind of one-stop shop in reception. They're also going through rigorous accreditation process with standards and benchmarks in order to make sure they fit that criteria, including things like having the Community Health Needs Assessment and many other things, and that's all I have. Anything else? So we are to item 14, Citizen Concerns. Seeing no concerned citizens, we are moving to item 15, Board Concerns and Comments. Anything for the good of the cause? And hearing none.
Matthew?
Yes, sir.
Thought we lost you.
No, I can say I'm glad we upgraded the phone equipment, and I can tell you from my end, the quality has much improved as well.
Great.
Good news.
All right, well, safe travels, and we'll see you when you're back.
Absolutely.
We are now adjourned. We are now adjourned.
Yeah.
So do this later. Well, gentlemen, we can go all the way through the best things to do like eight seasons.
That's true.